Okay. It's not even six o'clock yet.
Hey, this is me.
We have a pub, we can go to the pub.
I like that, I should.
Oh, we don't have one?
We need a zone for one of those, and I will fund the pub.
You have to have real pub food.
I might need to grab one.
That's good. This one says six. It's close by my camera. Who would like to do the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I will.
I was here last time, so I'll do it. I guess we still need to do all of that.
All right, I will call to order the Provo City Planning Commission hearing for Tuesday, sorry, Wednesday, August 28th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. We had six items on the agenda tonight. However, Items 2, 3, and 4 have been continued to another date, so we will only be hearing three items this evening. All three items are legislative, and so we'll be making a recommendation to municipal council on all three of these items tonight. All right. So before we get started, Ms. Wynden will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, commissioners. And could we please have roll call this evening, and please state whether you have a conflict of interest with any items on the agenda, starting with Ms. Urquaga.
Laurie Urquaga, no conflicts.
Russell Phillips, no conflicts.
Maria Wynden, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Robert Knusson, no conflict.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, Item 1 on our agenda this evening. The City Council Office requests amendments to Section 15.03.03.5 Provost City Code for clarification of grading permits. This will have citywide application, and Mr. Wright will present Item 1.
All right, thank you. So this item is a request from our City Council to clear up some language for clarification purposes related to the grading permits, Section 15.03.03.5 of the code relating to, mostly related to cuts and fills, and how those can be brought before a hearing when those are done with, other than when they're done for single-family residential development. And so, the language that we have in your staff report, there's one little section, if we can jump to the next slide, I'll show you. One little section here in red under Item, so 2B, and then number 2. That paragraph just got updated to be a little more readable than it is in your staff report, and so that would be the one change that we have, that we would send to the municipal council. But essentially, what it's saying here is that the Provo City Code's going to require project plan approval for cuts that are involved as part of a grading permit. And if you have specific questions about that, our city engineers here could possibly answer those questions, but if you have any others for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Howard?
What's the problem that this is supposed to be addressing? Because clearly, this is written to close a loophole or to clarify something. What's going on there?
Yeah, so right now, it's not, it doesn't specify that when there's an application for a grading permit that does involve that type of work that's going to be done, that it would go to a public hearing. And so, this language would specify when that would be appropriate to send it to a hearing, and that way, it's getting reviewed by other city departments and the public as well.
Okay. And the measurements are in cubic yards?
Yeah, I believe so.
I just note that in Paragraph 1, if you're making a change of this, you might want to add the word cubic to 50 yards of material, 50 cubic yards? Does it? I was going to say right up.
In the first sentence, at the end of the first sentence.
Okay. I think it's just an omission, you know, it's one of those things.
Yeah, I'll note that, and we'll make that adjustment.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Wynden?
Just one. On Section 1B.3, where it says the applicant shall post a cash bond in order to cover landscaping if they don't, if they don't cover it, is that, that bond is to be used in place of, but can they use that automatically as a fallback? Or is that just to protect the city in case the city has to go back in and landscape?
Yeah, so if a developer began work and began cutting away at a hillside, and then ended up walking away from the project and left it with that unfinished state, then that bond money could essentially be used by the city to go in and put it back to how it was or finish the project, depending on the situation there. So they'd be able to use those funds. If the project gets finished, then the cash bond can get released back to the applicant at the end.
Any other questions, commissioners? Did you have any questions for Public Works? No? Okay. Very good. I'll just note for the record that we have no members of the public or neighborhood chairs present this evening, so we will skip the public hearing portion, or the public comment portion of the hearing throughout the proceedings this evening unless someone does arrive, and we will then revert to that procedure. So I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion or a motion on Item 1, and we'll be making a recommendation to municipal council for Item 1.
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I move that we recommend for approval to the municipal council of the requested ordinance amendment in Section 15.03.03.5 of the Provo City Code clarifying grading permits.
Thank you. And do we have a second for Ms. Ellsworth's motion?
I have a second.
Seconded by Ms. Urquaga. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on Item 1?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will forward a positive recommendation, and that's unanimous, for Item 1 this evening. Okay, again, Items 2 through 4 were continued, so our next item is Item number 5. This will again be for a recommendation to municipal council. The Provo City Community Development Department requests amendments to Section 14.34.295 Downtown Development Design Standards to clarify architectural requirements in the downtown zones. Applies to the Central Business District, Joaquin, Mazur, Franklin, and Timp neighborhoods. And Mr. Pepperoni will be presenting Item 5 this evening.
Yeah, Mr. Mills is dealing with family situations, so I'll cover this item for him. This was discussed by the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago. In that discussion, the Planning Commission asked several questions about the transition between the public right-of-way sidewalk and the building itself, when the zone allows for a zero-foot setback. So we just called the Planning Commission's attention to lines 244 through 250 of the ordinance in your staff report. That's where it addresses this issue about that transitional space. Since that meeting with the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, the planning staff has talked about this, and when a developer comes in, in the very early stages of their project in a downtown zone, this will be pointed out to them that, yes, the setback is from zero to 10 feet, but they need to accommodate for this mediation between the public and private space, and they need to take that into account when they bring in their actual building plans. I don't know if that satisfies the concerns that were raised, but that language is already in the code. I have another question for the Planning Commission, but let's discuss that issue first before we get to another one, if there's any more discussion on it.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pepperoni? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm the one that raised some concerns in the last meeting, and my thoughts really, I guess, just relate to what I've seen us review, and what's been built, and a concern that I think is maybe a little bit more broad than what we have just here, which is that we seem to make a pretty significant effort as a community to encourage and promote other types of transportation besides automobiles. And at the same time, I think we're building streetscapes and dwellings that are really stark, and anything but attractive environments for people that aren't in automobiles to be in. For me, the zero setback is really the start of that. I don't think it needs to be, but when you have hardscape that is coupled with more hardscape as a building meets a sidewalk with little room for anything that might soften that relationship, anything that might make it so that somebody wants to spend some time in kind of that quasi-public-private realm that you have. For example, I love and appreciate the fact that we talk about things like balconies. I wish we talked a little bit more about things like porches, things at ground level, but when, and the idea that we have really seemed to emphasize having entrances to and from buildings at street level, and that certainly has been emphasized pretty heavily, but when there's no room that anybody, in my opinion, very, very infrequently would anyone want to spend a lot of time in kind of that interface, or where the interface just simply doesn't exist, it seems like it really promotes a pretty high transitory rate for people that might live there. It doesn't make an environment necessarily attractive for people to be in, whether you're on a bike or walking. Things like landscaping, trees, and I think there have been some changes in recent years that go a ways to requiring, for example, street trees, but when there's only sufficient space for like a conical or columnar type of a tree because you have a building that's in such close proximity to where a tree can go, and you can't get to where you're providing maybe a canopy, or, you know, some of the things that I think communities that are particularly prone to high pedestrian activity and things like that have. I think we're falling really, really short of what we could be creating and what we really should start with. As I read through these guidelines, and honestly, I've done that just in the last couple of weeks for the first time in much detail, they seem to be really top-heavy to me, which I don't necessarily think is a bad thing, but as we review project plans, we typically are looking at perspectives that you might get of a project from a block or two or three away, where we're looking at this, maybe a seven-story mass, and we're critiquing that, where I think most residents of the community, most people that you would find interfacing with these structures really see a very different perspective of the building, and really live differently than what, you know, kind of that perspective that we see might suggest. So I would love to, you know, maybe just understand a little bit more about the priorities that we're trying to accomplish with the guidelines. I think this discussion is critical. Not that I need to remind anybody, but when project plans come to the Planning Commission, it's simply a matter of whether they meet these standards or not. There's no room for debate. You know, we've had some arguments with developers about interpreting some of this language, but for me, given the current zoning status that we have, and what's allowed by right, I think it's essential that we be deliberate, and that we take time, and that we make sure that we understand what we're really trying to accomplish, and certainly, I recognize that maybe I've missed things that have changed since certain projects have been approved in Provo, but that's really my biggest concern, is just what's going to make it so that somebody really wants to live in that building, and really going to want to have an entrance to their home that goes directly out onto a street, or maybe to spend some time in some space that might have some semi-private kind of a, an aspect to it, where they're maybe having some type of relationship with people that are out in the public space, which I think I want to assume, and I don't at the same time want to assume erroneously, but I think that's part of what we probably are trying to create in terms of a downtown environment, or an environment in some areas where we're working to have higher density development, and, you know, just maybe a little bit more particular due to my concerns when that interface with, or between residents and the public in the street is less than arm's length away, I don't feel like that does create any kind of comfortable environment that really promotes either the residents using space in a certain way, or people, you know, really feeling like the public realm is inviting.
So in your opinion, is the 300 West frontage of Liberty Center adequate or appropriate?
Can we look at that? Liberty Center is which project?
Across the street. So on the 300 West side, they've got porches and stoops there, so there's direct access to the street, but every unit has a porch or a stoop. So that's that semi-private space that we accomplished through this wording, that, or in those lines I referred to. So they actually did push the building back so they could accommodate those stoops. I would imagine that on upper floors, they could kind of leave her back out over it, under our rules, and I don't know that I have any problem with that, but to me, that's a good example of what you seem to be expressing, or what I'm hearing you say. So if that's not adequate, I'd just like to know what else we need to do. These were written to allow people to replicate Center Street, which obviously is very pedestrian-oriented. Under the old Central Business District Zone that we had in place for 20 or 30 years, you couldn't replicate Center Street. These were trying to let you do that.
And on that, just, and I interrupted, and I apologize for that, from my perspective, Center Street, you know, that is, has been the CBD, and...
So that's one of my questions.
It's not, I don't think I have the same concern about non-residential uses at street level, and how they interface with...
So that's one of my questions.
Public realm, but it's more of the residential, so...
That's one of my questions, so thanks for clarifying that. Then my other question is, if Center Street seems right, and you've talked about another store, another building that's very tall, is it the mass of that building that then creates a greater need for that transition space? Because Center Street seems to work to me, and that they are generally commercial uses, but it's not a very tall building, right? Those are the historic three-story, the tallest of three stories. So is that building height versus setback, is that playing into this? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, for me, you get three stories and above, and I don't think building height really matters. I mean, I do, I probably was a pretty big fan of the concept of stepping buildings back at a certain height because of what that can do for people at that street level, just in terms of light and air, and some of those fundamentals, but I don't think that impacts how necessarily we feel when we're walking down the street, and, you know, somebody's coming out of their door, you know, onto the street, or that type of thing. That's just me, but...
We can't do this because it's a public hearing, and it's got to be recorded, but I would love to take the entire Planning Commission across the street...
Yeah.
...to walk 300 West to take a look at that.
And I'm just looking now at Google Earth.
That would be a great...
Yeah, there we go.
There we go.
I think, and while Dave's getting his photo where he wants it, I think one of the things that he's reacting to is that, oh, there are a few things. There is, you know, you do have a hard edge of a building up against the public right-of-way. You have a planting strip with trees in it, but it's primarily hardscaped, and those trees are immature. So I think, for me, one of the things that could make, could kind of signify that this is more residential in character along this street, which it is, as it's now developed, would be, instead of having trees and grates, to have that, a continuous planting strip, where you do have access for people to get onto the sidewalk from their parking space, but soften that edge a little bit more. And I know our new standards are for seven-foot-wide planting strips, and these are not that wide. So I just think on these, what I'll call B-streets, Center Street being the A-street, this is a B-street that leads to Center Street, so it's important that it have, you know, a good aesthetic. For me, it would have, it's a very, very wide street, I mean, it's incredibly wide for very few cars that use it. It doesn't have a center lane, a line painted on it, and it's just extraordinarily wide. I think, just as a learning example from this development, if instead we had taken half of that width for diagonal parking on that side of the street, and made parallel parking, and made a softer, a wider park strip edge along there, so you could have things like benches that, you know, play into a downtown urban living environment, bike racks, you know, trash receptacles, all those kind of urban furniture that would make it more inviting residentially, I think that would make a big difference.
Yeah, I think across the street and up to the new courts building, you won't see on these photos, but I think the new courts building, how is that there? How that could put it? I think these do have wider park strips and benches and things on the courts building.
And it's continuously planted, it's not just, you know, trees and grates.
For me, how that park strip space is treated, I think this might be what Deborah's saying, but, and I think there's a place for pavers, and, you know, that should be appreciated there, but it contributes so much to kind of a denuded feeling at that street level, just, you know, again, so much hardscape. But I think primarily my concern with, and I don't live there, but I can't imagine you wanting to spend any time on your porch. And that gets talked about in some literature quite a bit, about being space that you want people to spend time in. You know, you want that to be a part of promoting a community feel, and understanding what's going on at the street, and things like that.
I know that people do use those doors to go in and out, but I think you're right. I think they utilize the porch space less than the balconies are used.
And for me, and help me understand where I'm wrong about this, but I think we limit, to some extent, the height, that that can be above the street level, like with maximum number of steps or something like that. I mean, having a little bit of vertical separation, I think, is one way to make people feel more comfortable, both street level and on the unit, but likewise, where the railing on, I'll call it a porch, is right next to the sidewalk, that, you know, just, I think that's something that a lot of people don't probably appreciate, or that probably inhibits maybe people from spending more time there versus, and incidentally, I am not promoting that things be set back 10 feet at all, but a little bit of room there, maybe some additional vegetation there and that type of thing, whereas right now, and I'll say this, I love how these are designed, you know, where you have the brick up to, you know, transparent railing, which I think likewise also could be brick, but I like that. But I think if a priority is to create a different kind of relationship at the street level, there needs to be some additional room, and that room, you know, used with the shrubbery like they have elsewhere along the facade, probably goes a ways towards making it feel, you know, just a little bit more like private space versus part of the right-of-way.
Ms. Wynden?
I'm kind of going along with this, but talking more in terms of commercial. I enjoy the sociality of Center Street, but frequently, when I'm walking along Center Street, I'm not walking by myself, I'm with, you know, one or two or three other people. And it's very difficult to sometimes even walk to a breast on Center Street when you have people coming towards you, and you have sandwich signs, which I'm not complaining about, and you have the little cafe tables and chairs, which I'm not complaining about. I'm just saying that it makes, that limited space makes it difficult to be a pedestrian, and especially along Center Street, where the street is so narrow, and it's, you know, generally very full of traffic because it's a major road. Bicycleists do not feel comfortable riding on the road on Center Street. It's hard enough being a car, you know, trying to watch out for people backing up, and having backed up, it's very hard to do. But bicyclists have a very hard time keeping an eye out for the cars coming alongside them, and watching for cars backing up, and so generally, I've seen them ride on the sidewalk, which I would do. And that crowds the sidewalk even further. And, you know, I realize that these are historic buildings, they've been there for a very long time, and so I'm not sure what, in terms of setback, what could be done with newer buildings. But I'm just raising that as a concern, that as we increase more, have more people downtown, with people living there and people visiting, that those sidewalks along Center Street, especially along 100 West, 200 West, 100 East, you know, especially in those blocks, the pedestrian traffic sometimes struggles for room.
Can I echo that? I guess I look at it this way, that sidewalk width, I mean, I'd almost compare it to a roadway width, where on a street where you're expecting a certain trip generation, you know, you plan for a certain number of travel lanes and that type of thing, having a certain amount of space dedicated to that path, and I think our six feet, is that kind of the typical sidewalk width downtown? Is it eight?
Eight, on Center Street.
On Center Street?
Eight feet.
There are a few around that are less than eight, but, and our suburban typical sidewalk width is...
That's six.
That's six, so...
Seven-foot porch strip and six-foot sidewalk.
You know, we're at six feet for three to five units to the acre. You know, we're, we're at six feet four, three to five units to the acre, and we're eight feet four, 80, 90 units. So that's, not that there's a direct proportional fit that works there. But I completely agree that a little bit more room, and I'm not talking about 20-foot wide sidewalks or anything. But things like the sandwich boards, things like outdoor seating. I think they're vital for the types of non-residential uses that you'd want to see in this environment and hope to see and try to promote and accommodate. And it takes a little bit of space really to make that happen. It was the project on First East Center Street that I guess kind of got me really thinking about. And then concerned about just that room. And I really appreciate Deborah and her thoughts about parking and, and maybe using that space a little bit differently. In terms of getting away from the angled parking and going to something different to be able to almost reclaim that. For any of the things that we're talking about. But as I ran that up the flagpole with some folks that, you know, would be potential candidates, at least for operating businesses in this environment. They feel really strongly about that angled parking being a fairly critical component. Even if it's just a perceived idea that customers will view their business as being more accessible because of that. They really feel strongly that that's an important thing to have.
Do these urban design standards that we're talking about sidewalk widths and planting strips, they're, they're not encoded in this particular document that we're hearing tonight.
Downtown streetscape standards, yeah.
I, I think, I think it's a topic that I know for several of us on the, on the planning commission. Would be very interested in having a deeper conversation about perhaps with Public Works as well, some of the things. And perhaps economic development, because they're going to have the perspective of, of the tenants that own the businesses. And run them in the downtown. We, we could talk all night about the benefit of angled or parallel parking. Or, you know, no parking. I think we all know Center Street could be a whole lot more than it is. At least we have it. Orem doesn't have anything like that. You know, it's kind of our little signature that we have this nice, commercial, historic zone. And I, I just think what I'm hearing and my own thoughts are that it could be strengthened tremendously.
Okay, so the setbacks are in the zones and the downtown streetscape standards, that's a separate document.
Right. I have a comment.
Can these issues be addressed there or?
I think in the streetscape documents, I would imagine. I think Ms. Ellsworth had a comment.
And then I would like the council, the planning commission, as you think about this issue, think about historic, historic places you've been to. Mr. Anderson, I know you've been to Georgetown and I know you've been in New Orleans.
Yeah, sure.
And they're playing with less space than we are with even greater pedestrian volumes, manifold that we're talking about. So there are places that do this exact thing, but even more so. So as we continue this discussion, I'd like you to just think about those areas also.
My comments are on this, and I don't know if you can bring back that image of Liberty Place. But I think, I mean, I'm imagining myself, and if I lived there and if I was occupying that little stoop, what would I want it to be? I, I don't want to be looking at cars, right? Like, I don't want to, I get the need for on-street parking. I'm an advocate for on-street parking. But that's, I think, an uncomfortable vista at ground level. So I think a little bit of elevation off of that would be nice. And I'm also thinking about classic brownstones in New York where you're going up five or six or seven steps. You could sit at the top of your step and have some distance from a pedestrian kind of below you. You're in that space and you're out of that space, and that seems more comfortable than this kind of brick enclave next to a, to big trucks.
Yeah, or headlights, you know, for example, you know, you have right into, into your house, your home.
Ms. Wynden.
Sorry.
As I understand it though, brownstone style, because of the number of steps leading up to the main entrance. They're not, they're not allowed by code because that's too much of an elevation? Am I correct or am I wrong?
We do have a restriction on that, that height. On the other hand, when we had a project at 100 North and 100 East, they originally proposed brownstones. And we were very supportive of that. So I'm not sure how we worked through it in that case. I agree with what Ms. Ellsworth, Mr. Anderson are saying about that several steps and landing. Provides much, much better transition. And that private to public space that you've been discussing, I agree with that.
Well, it's certainly come a long way since we started this. I mean, I remember when this was a real fledgling document. And it was all about not having stucco. And so, you know, there's been a lot of work put into this. And I think that, you know, with the comments that have been made, that it can be improved, that's true, but we've come a long way. And, and, and that's, that's where you are. You have to decide at what point are we good enough to make the recommendation? And if there's no pressure, I think we can evaluate it. If there's some need, urgency, then, then we have to make that decision of how much is done is done.
This is staff initiated, so on, on one hand, there's not urgency in that regard. If a new project came in tomorrow, they would go under the existing codes, not under this. This is beyond being pending legislation. It's expired in terms of being pending legislation. So they would go under the current code we have in the book right now, which is short of this. But it is staff initiated, so there's not a developer waiting for this to pass so that they can go on with their project.
But again, are we having any concerns or issues expressed that deal with what's in this document? For tonight as opposed to the streetscape standards?
Yeah.
Which are, I think, I think are what, are giving us heartburn.
That's up to the planning commission.
I think there are things in this document definitely that would need to address building design. And I don't think it's just streetscape for me, standards.
Can you be more specific?
Things like, you know, how you might create some type of separation between a sidewalk and a door to somebody's domicile. I don't think that's addressed in our streetscape standards, at least I.
I think you're right.
Assume that's not. And again, that's probably one of my bigger thoughts. And just in terms of the format that these different documents have. One of the things that I struggle with, and probably will forever, and maybe it's just me. Are the multiple different locations that standards for projects are found in. So from my perspective, things like setbacks and streetscape design, and we could probably add to the list a few things. Those are such critical components of design regulations that there should be one. Place for all of them.
Design guidelines.
Call it that, or, I mean, I appreciate how this is titled, but I think those other things. They're just fundamentally tied to how you'd look comprehensively at a project to see if it works or doesn't. And, you know, and that type of a thing. I don't know how hard it would be to maybe encapsulate things into fewer documents or maybe one.
Well, I think while Mr. Yost was here, was, he was working on sort of graphic depiction of the regulations. So I think what I'm hearing Mr. Anderson say is that it would be helpful if there were. For, for example, something that you could hand off to developers, they could download it off the website.
They just, we just hand them three documents.
That's a graphic.
We give them the, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That graphically kind of ties it all together. So it, it shows this is the way it should be done. This is not the way it should be done. And it includes all these elements that we're trying to talk about in separate documents right now. It's easier, especially with development services, having a streamlined approach now. If you have a consolidated document that, that is an easy go-to reference. For things like site design, building placement, you know, landscape requirements, streetscape requirements. Setbacks, all of that. It's all in one document. You can tell them, here, here are our standards. This is what you must meet, and there you go. So.
And I'll bet for staff, I mean, it's second nature, right? You guys have worked with this stuff for years. You know where the standards are. You know what's out there. And I think we've put a lot of trust in you guys. When you say a project meets the standards, we say okay and, and move forward. So I don't mean to second guess, you know, the fact that you get it and I don't necessarily. But in terms of just reviewing the document and trying to understand where maybe there are shortcomings. That's maybe part of my, my ignorant concern, so.
I, I don't disagree. There would be easier to have it all in one place. But what you're talking about is a major rewrite. This is not something that's going to happen quickly or easily. And.
We can recommend to council that that be considered for discussion.
And the sentence Bill didn't finish is that their whole department is going through a transition, right? So there's some constraints.
I guess, I guess I'm hearing competing feelings about whether or not we want to continue this again. Make recommendations to council. The issue right now is that there's not a project in the pipeline that we have to immediately react to. But if one comes up, and this hasn't even gone to council yet for a vote. Then it hasn't even gone through that vetting process yet, and they probably may have some of their own issues or questions or concerns about it.
Do they care a lot about design standards?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I guess my personal feeling is that I would rather have it move forward. Knowing that we can revise it and improve it as we go forward.
Eighty percent is now versus.
And I know not everyone agrees with me on that, so that's, that's fine. And I would like to just, everyone weigh in on this and see how you feel.
My sense is, not having seen all of the history for this, but my sense is that this says something important. And so there's value to having this on the books. But I think that a strong recommendation that consolidation be pursued as a future goal. Ought to be part of the recommendation that goes up.
Makes sense.
Yep. Anyone else? Ms. Wynden?
I would be interested in seeing how some of these other cities that you mentioned, like New Orleans, Georgetown. How, how do they fit everything within the space that they have, you know, in their downtown area? You know, are their sidewalks the same width? Where do they fit their cafe tables? Where do they put their sandwich boards? How do they make that work for them? You know, I've been to New Orleans. I've briefly walked through Georgetown. I've been to Williamsburg, you know. But honestly, I never really paid that much attention to those details. So I'd be kind of interested to see, how do they make that work?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Anderson.
And, you know, I, I've loved visiting those communities and I've visited them both several times. But in all candor, they're super unique.
Yeah.
And that, in my opinion, is probably not the best model to look to. Although I think, Bill, your point of seeing how they use space and how that, that maybe lack of some of the things I'm suggesting here. Doesn't in any way, shape or form impact value or how people have appreciated those. But for me, it's maybe looking to communities that are a little bit more contemporary in nature that might.
Less historic.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm thinking about like a Renko Station or some of the things they've done on Stapleton, the new project there in Denver. And, you know, we could put together a pretty lengthy list. I don't necessarily want this to drag out for weeks and months. I think that, I'm feeling like it's staff's concern, but I think there probably are some things that we could look to. To get some, some ideas about, maybe there's some additional language here that would be useful. And I guess if I have a reservation with moving this forward now, and I'm getting the sense that if this is at the point now. To where it's been in the pipeline so long, that the pending legislation provisions no longer are applicable. The likelihood that we're going to get another bite at the apple in a timeframe that really makes it meaningful. You know, to, to make changes, that gets a little bit tricky and I think maybe unreasonable to expect. And again, this is it for us. I've expressed concerns about us having project plan approvals on agendas. And going through the exercise of public hearings, because this is the only time we will provide input that means anything. So that's my reservation with, you know, maybe just moving forward before we're ready to say, if it meets the standards, that's it. Yeah, public, whatever you say, thanks, but it meets the standards. And we don't have the kind of lengthy debates and discussion that we've had on more than a few projects where these provisions have come into play, so.
Is it, is it eighty percent there? I mean, how, how much work do you think needs to be done? And that's the hard part for any of us to figure out, because really I look at you guys for the technical expertise.
We all have different opinions.
We do.
But in my opinion, for the things that, that probably need the most effort, I don't think we're eighty percent there. That's just my opinion.
Well, and, and see, that, that goes to the point. My, my philosophy is that, because this whole process is an evolution. I mean, three years, five years from now, it'll be different. The traffic will be different. The commuting will be different. Everything that we tried to plan for will have missed the mark by some amount because it's further downrange, and that's just the way it is. So when you have stuff like this, I think, I think we as a body have to decide. Is, is it, is it good as where it is? Because the, the council gets to take a bite of the apple. And, and can they carry the ball forward? And can we be comfortable with that? And that's, I think that's what you're saying too. So I don't know if we're there or not yet. I mean, I'm still wrestling with, are we there yet? And, you know, I, I think if, if we could, if we, if we table it. Can we say in two months, we'll have, we'll get it to the place where we can recommend it, so that he can have some.
But I, I haven't heard any specific revisions that are desired, that apply to this document as it sits tonight. So I think if, if the decision is that you don't want to forward a positive recommendation as a body. To municipal council for this item, then I think that staff needs and, and deserves. Some, some very precise instruction as to what they should do next. Because right now I'm not hearing anything specific. I'm hearing big ideas, but.
I, I agree with that. So what I was going to suggest is if you're not comfortable moving it forward. What we typically do in these situations is that there's a subcommittee of this group that works with staff to come up with.
I think that makes some sense.
Because otherwise we spend a lot of time with staff trying to guess what you meant.
Right.
I can restate what I've said in like bullet point form, if that's helped, helpful to be taken as.
What would be helpful is for you to mark the actual document where you say it's deficient, and what would you suggest as new wording?
And honestly, I am not staff. I'm not getting paid to do that. But I have expressed my thoughts in a pretty clear way relative to things that I think are deficient. In terms of the projects that were being asked to be approved and where the shortfalls are. I honestly, I, I haven't worked with a lot of folks that wouldn't understand a little bit about. You know, how maybe a document would need to be changed and take those things into account. But if we really need to go back to square one and get really simple with how we articulate thoughts. About where things are maybe missing and what needs to be changed, I'd be happy to do that.
Any other comments, commissioners?
What about the idea of a subcommittee? I mean, I, I'd be willing to sit on one, but I don't know that I would add architectural value to such a thing.
It seems to me like that would slow it down even more.
It, it might if I were on it.
And that's not what I was suggesting at all.
Well, I am.
So your concern, Mr. Anderson, is primarily with ground floor treatment along primary and secondary streets. Is that correct?
Yes.
So building entrances. Sort of transitional space.
That supplementary zone that you have between, you know, the right of way and the building and just what happens there again. that space that might be privately owned, but doesn't necessarily feel like it's private? And how that gets treated. And again, just to be specific, the images that we're looking at of the project is just across the street where you've got two steps up, transparent rail, parking, I think, ten feet away. And, you know, really very little happening there that encourages people to, to, to interact with one another between those two realms, to spend time there. For example, you don't see much furniture on those porches or different things that might suggest.
Yeah, I think.
They're not secure. It's easy for people to walk off with your stuff. They're not secure.
Yeah.
And that honestly, I think, you know, is a matter of space too. I mean, some of us do have furniture in our lawns and things like that, and I would guess that if it's right next to the sidewalk, the likelihood that it would walk off is probably quite a bit greater, so. And I would guess that the likelihood that things will walk off would probably be less if, if that porch space was, you know, another half a man height high or something like that, so.
And your critique is largely for residential interfaces, not necessarily commercial.
It is, understanding that I think we've made some changes. So for example, the north side of the Central Bank Building, just off of University Avenue where it's asphalt curb gutter, pavers, sidewalk, building, nothing else there. No trees, no shrubbery, nothing. And even though that's how Center Street was built a hundred years ago, I think probably we've learned some things since then and, and can treat those types of environments differently if we really want people to walk and to be out in the community.
You make a good point.
Criticize suburban environments for being the same way, you know, concrete jungle and different things like that, and.
So how do you write that into there? Though I think that's the, you just say, well, I don't know.
I think this is a great discussion because it shows that we're not happy with the status quo and we, we are aspiring to be more than we are. That's, those are all good things. And, and as these projects get built, it's really, it's really difficult to critique the code when it's a paper plan being presented to you with some zoomy images by a developer. But when you actually see the building and the project developed on the site in its context, I think there are a few that have happened around town that we probably wish could have been better.
Well, in fact, the building that was just shown as an improvement from the ones that were.
Right, right. And, and we can see that we've made advances and improvements, so it's just a continuing dialogue of how do we keep making things better? Anyway, that's a little bit off topic, but.
I agree, though. I mean, I think that's a good way to express what I'm feeling.
So the setback here is zero to ten feet. Dave, would you change that to like three to ten feet?
You know, I, I honestly, I hate to do that. I think it's about more than space. I think it's about how you use the space. Frankly, I do think you need some space there. But I don't know that, for me, there's like a magic number that I'd wanna, I mean, right now, I think it'd be very arbitrary to say that three feet works, but two feet doesn't, or five feet's needed.
Yeah. Well, I'm looking at, what is this, number four, one, use of foundation plantings to provide separation between residential units and the sidewalk. So when we go back to that Liberty Place one, there is no planting between the step and the sidewalk. There's planting between the sidewalk and the building, but not between my porch and the sidewalk, right?
That's correct.
And I was thinking, if I lived there, could I plant tomato plants somewhere? And it, there's not, there's like no really good place to put that, right? So I mean, this is an optional requirement, number one. All of these are optional. How would we, how would we feel comfortable? Like what statement would capture what we're trying to express if we put a number four in here?
It, it just seems to me that there should be a, more of a differentiation between a residential B Street and the commercial A Street, which is Center Street. And maybe one way to accommodate that is to require two feet of planting between the edge of the sidewalk and the building face.
Which is a good idea for this Liberty Place, but it's also not what we see in a New York brownstone.
Right.
So it's not one size.
So it's like, what, what kind of environment do we want to create over, over time as these streets redevelop, which they're doing?
And relative to the New York brownstone, what you do see typically though is more of the vertical, right? And in kind of those gaps from stairway to stairway, I don't think it's uncommon to see, you know, stuff.
Tree wells.
Right, different things like that, so.
Benches.
One of the things that I found curious, in fact, is kind of the orientation of stairs to the public space. How, you know, whether it's the project on Second South or this one, you see that turned almost as if, well, it, it's just not open to the public space like you'd have with some other things that are different model.
I guess I, I would like to see a transition between the commercial core of Center Street and kind of knowing now you've entered a different realm when you turn the corner and walk down Third. You know, you've just, maybe it's done with some sort of landscape element or, you know, could be a column. I mean, there are a lot of ways to, to do that kind of a device, but you feel that you've actually passed from one zone to another, because they are different in character. I mean, you've set up Third West now to be residential, urban residential. So to, to strengthen that change, that's, makes walking in a city interesting as you go from zone to zone and you kind of feel like you're in a different environment, a different place. It's not a monotonous, continuous, more of the same everywhere you go.
But that picture of Liberty Place had those striped awnings like we would see on Center Street. Right? So to me, that, that's a more commercial indicator than a residential indicator to have a.
But they're only about this, this.
They're little guys. I mean, but it reminds me of the coffee shop more than, you know, an urban front porch. Those tiny awnings down further north. But I, I mean, I agree with you both. And I don't have any specific changes.
No, I think if we decide it's mostly there, we should send it to the council. If we think not, then we should keep working on it. And by mostly there, because they're gonna, they're gonna put their spin on this too. They're gonna have their input and their dialogue and they'll hopefully watch this meeting and say, you know, they're conflicted about, you know, the, the separation. And I think those are valid points, are really good points. You know, they're gonna, whatever we recommend is gonna be changed by their, their flavor on it. So I, I think, again, we have to decide, is it, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. You gotta, if, if, if it's good and we feel good about it, let's recommend it. If not, let's work on it.
And I agree with Andrew. I think shipping beats perfection. And maybe we don't get to, I don't know, maybe it takes us working with a developer to bring this up another ten percent.
However, if this is the standard, then there's no incentive, no, nothing for a developer to make any changes whatsoever other than comply with what's here.
That's what Dave said.
Or the market.
Yeah.
That's what he's, yeah.
I'd be interested to know if those ground floor spaces along 300 West, if they have leased as well as the upper floors with the private balconies.
I don't know. I don't think those private balconies are very cool either.
They're not, but, you know, I agree that the, the lack of privacy on those ground floor units is pretty stark.
I know the ground floor, they're all leased. I don't know how it compares to the whole building.
Yeah.
I think they might have a waiting list there, honestly.
Well, it's an attractive building and it's a positive asset for downtown. There's no denying it.
And just given the nature of the project where it, you know, it serves a certain demographic, like people like things about it.
We've talked a lot about the residential. Is anybody else concerned about what I had mentioned on Center Street, you know, with the tightness, I guess, for the sake of a better word?
Is that included in this ordinance change? So that would be for another.
I think that's a good topic for future discussion. And, and I would like to see that be a discussion, not just within the Planning Commission and Community Development, but also including Public Works and maybe Economic Development, where we really look at case studies and I'm not meaning to put homework on your plate, Mr. Pepperoni, but
That's a challenge.
Sometimes just understanding how these things can work in other places, we, we're so inured with what we have, we don't really see it anymore. So I think at the last hearing, I mentioned that some very successful commercial streets have very narrow sidewalks and marginal street trees. But they still are very full of vitality and can be successful. You know, I just don't know what the political will here is to change things like how parking's arranged on our streets downtown or how wide the sidewalks are. It's, you know, it's all amount of money and political will to make anything change, so. It's, it's a great discussion to have, I think, for future. Do we want to go in this direction or that, or is everything good? But.
Andrew said some things a minute ago that made me think, just in terms of timing and what this means. And frankly, I'm not gonna be around.
Yeah, my term runs out.
The majority of the life of what we're talking about here, what, you know, what gets built? It's a hundred plus years for sure. So, I mean, I think it really does matter. And we owe it to a whole lot of people that for a long period of time are gonna be in, in these environments to do what we can to make it as good as we can. So that's, you know, from my perspective, I think some additional times definitely warranted and I think it'd be very beneficial. And I'm really feeling increasingly like the siloed nature of our standards is a concern for me. I think the issue that you bring up about sidewalk width, that absolutely relates to what I'm wondering about and thinking about in terms of just what happens at that street level and what we want to see happen. I don't know where that's defined, if that's in like a street cross-section that the city has, you know, what sidewalk width is. You know, maybe that's just one other place that we'd look to for guidance to, to try to, do what we can to get it as good as we can.
So it sounds like three things, landscaping setback and height above the separation between public and residential area. Those are the three takeaways I got. Is that three things we can chew on?
I would agree with that assessment.
Improve this thing?
Well, those three are almost integrated into these three, one, two, and three. Right? Maybe we can improve number one. If we go back to that image, there's almost no plantings. There's those tree wells, and then there's a little shrub right there on the right. So it is a pretty, you know, it's asphalt and then it's brick and then it's concrete and then it's brick. But it had, you know, if this were on the books, then they hopefully would take one, two, or three, or all. What, is there anything we would change about number one? Plantings to provide separation between residential units and.
Are you referring to building design, section two?
Section, I'm looking at C, site design, number four, and one, two, and three. Under three parking access of site design.
Is it numbered? Can you just give us the number?
Line two forty-six?
Yeah, two forty-six, yeah. Line two forty-six.
Two forty-six, thank you.
What could we add to number one that would meet our desires for a softer, more comfortable intermediate space?
I mean, I think the addition of and between one and two to require both.
Okay.
And three.
And elevate, do you want to say and and elevate off the?
That's what number three says.
That's elevation change.
Oh, that's what that means, okay. Well, there you go. This is why.
Yeah.
So my question is, as it's written, would this liberty development fit?
I think it would, right? Yeah.
Well, there are no elevation changes.
Oh, there are, yes.
The step.
Not much.
Yeah, there's like two steps there.
But maximum is thirty inches, is that correct, Bill?
That's what I was just looking for. I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
We, we have a minimum, but do we have a maximum?
Thirty inches is six steps or?
Inches is the maximum. We have a maximum, but not a minimum.
Watch your step. It's probably like four.
Four? Outdoor step is.
The more steps you have, the further back the house has to be from, or the residence has to be from the.
Well, the way they accomplished it here is they turned the steps sideways to the face of the building. So.
So you want a vertical and a setback.
Is that something that we would add to this and say, step should be perpendicular, or I don't even know. Not perpendicular, not parallel to the building, perpendicular to the building? Leading straight into the building instead of at an angle?
I mean, that would require, that would be like requiring a stoop that.
And not require it, but provide that as a strategy?
I think that, I think that this is not saying how they have to do it.
Exactly.
Porches, stoops, and railings.
More flexibility.
That's why it says maybe met with the following strategies.
Every site's gonna be a little different.
Yeah, you need, you need that flexibility, don't you?
Yeah.
Or we could even put in a number four that says, we prefer the stairs that go straight up versus stairs that are at a ninety.
But do we? Because that doesn't provide an outdoor balcony. It's a stoop, but you know, I don't know that.
They go down and, I mean, I can see all kinds of, this is why.
There's so many ways you can do it.
And you don't, and the character, you don't want to be prescribing the building.
Yeah, this isn't prescriptive, right? It says maybe met with the following strategies.
I would recommend that the thirty inches be changed as a maximum, that we might want to allow fifty inches or something higher than the thirty inches as a maximum. But it, I think this allows for what Mr. Anderson is talking about. It doesn't require it.
Yeah, it doesn't require it.
Maybe it doesn't go far enough in terms of requiring enough of it. Terrible way to put it. If we're gonna try to work with this language here to change it, I like the idea of a thirty inch separation maybe being the minimum and then have some other number be the maximum. I and I hate to do this in this environment where it's pretty arbitrary when we're pulling numbers out of the air.
Right.
I think, you know, Brooklyn or Manhattan walk-up, that's a, that's a good model to look at. And like I said, there are contemporary developments around the country that pretty dense developments people that have employed hundreds of thousands of dollars with designers to get it right. I think we could probably take some things off that way. I like the idea of stairs leading directly to public space, but and I feel like this with all of these, as soon as we prescribe something and require it,
It's gonna be.
we're gonna say, oh, that looks great, but.
That's exactly right.
And that's part of why I feel like it would more time now. And, you know, I think this affords a lot of flexibility. I appreciate that, but if that's what this is prescribing, then I, I think we need to make changes.
I don't think that this is what that's prescribed.
First of all, just to clarify, we are talking about residential, right? We're not talking about commercial having this minimum, right?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. And then to Mr. Anderson, second point, one thing I do like about this change is that the very beginning of the document, it gives the Planning Commission some discretion on these requirements that you don't have now. So that that situation you just referred to. so that that situation you just referred to, that if we prescribe this and they come in with something better, I think under that language, you can approve to something better. Anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, that's good.
Ms. Ellsworth, I'm sorry. Did you not...
On that thought, discretion, my thoughts could change entirely about how specific we need to be here, and honestly, I'm not a fan of really explicit design guidelines. So, I think, short of this document being a couple hundred pages, and highly visual and stuff like that, and employing a really, really huge brain trust to get it written, which requires a lot of effort to administer, I think there are going to be gaps and holes.
That's correct.
If this could be written such that there is more discretion, I mean, I would come to meetings and totally trust Deborah alone to critique designs, and that's...
We have that trust in you.
Is that something that could be explored?
I don't know, I don't know how you do that.
Is the lang, is the language at the beginning, under "exceptions," there at the beginning of the document, one applicability, and then paragraph C, "exceptions," is that not far enough to accomplish what you're looking for?
Do you have a line number?
Yes, starts with line number eight.
"Exception," sorry, damn it.
"Design Review Committee, Planning Commission may approve ultimate design arrangement equal to or better." So, this is like the minimum acceptable.
I could say, my feeling is pretty succinctly, I think it's just that these are guidelines and the Planning Commission, are we the land use authority on these, or is it the City Council, project plan approvals?
You're the land use authority.
That's what I thought, so it would be, you know, and other requirements as deemed fit by the Planning Commission. If there's some latitude built in there, I guess I'm suggesting maybe quite a bit of latitude, then I like the idea of giving an applicant some guidelines that, you know, if they follow, they could rely on being maybe that 80 or 90% there. But, you know, that, that does lead to less predictability for them and for staff. It makes discussions with us more meaningful, I think.
Yeah, and I don't know how we define "better," because I remember two years ago in February, we were looking at that one door adjacent to the Old Chapel Apartments for two hours, and I thought it was fine without a door, but our code in some way stipulated that it needed that door. So, I don't know how we define "better," as indicated here, with the latitude clause, the exceptions.
Yeah, we left "better" like that on purpose, so that as a group of eight people tonight, you get to decide what's better.
Could we say that...
The reason why we put this exception in was because the Design Review Committee saying, "This document has a lot of hard numbers, 80% of this, 60% of that, 30% of this." The Design Committee, Review Committee said, "Give Planning Commission some kind of discretion so that if somebody comes in with 60, you know, 59% where it requires 60, the Planning Commission can still approve that."
Okay. Okay.
But it's, you're saying, you're saying make it even more broad, though. You're saying, right?
Doesn't that get you into nebulous territory?
For me, it's one of the, I mean, trying to limit, where do you draw the line?
That's right.
That gray becomes really gray, and you know, the folks that you work with, if on this project here on Third West, if when that got to the Planning Commission, somebody said, "Hey, you need another two feet of landscaping between your porch and the sidewalk," how's that received at that point? You know, if we said, "Hey, according to these provisions, you're supposed to have some vertical separation, you're supposed to have plantings around the building, we don't see them," what do you think? I mean, is that, how realistic is it that we could exercise discretion, I guess is what I'm asking?
If that discretion means moving a building in a downtown environment, that's going to be hard to do.
Even just by two feet, right? I mean, it's...
Land's too expensive.
Things are, well, and design work is really expensive. That seems like that's the challenge at that point, they're very heavily invested by the time they get here.
That's true.
Ms. Wynden? Sorry, go ahead, finish. Are you done?
I don't think we're done with this.
No, I don't want to interrupt.
Really?
Okay. Without these guidelines, with the ones that are currently in place, we could see more developments like what is on the corner of 7th North and 900 East. I'm not sure if that falls within this zone, I know it's...
We just amended those guidelines so that you can't do that again. You guys just approved that a couple months ago, and it just went to City Council last night and got approved.
Yeah, and this is downtown, that's not downtown.
That's campus mixed use, and we just fixed that one.
Nobody wants that again.
No.
Nobody.
No. Well, it just said Joaquin, so I wasn't sure if that fell within that, that neighborhood, or it was a different zone, but without some sort of number, there has to be some sort of measuring stick for a developer to come forward with an idea, and for community development to say, "Yes, this meets criteria," or "No, it doesn't." Without that, some sort of measuring stick, then they can come forward with just about anything and say, "Well, but you haven't stipulated this, that, and the other." I think this comes pretty close.
Okay, and I'm always looking for ways to reword things and maybe get to a response, but if on line 245, where it says, "This requirement may be met with the following strategies," strategies, if we added a combination of the following strategies, that basically says you've got to mix and not just pick one, would that make a difference?
245? Yeah, 244 and 245.
Okay. I think that's what I was suggesting when I said, "And," use foundation plantings and design porches, stoops, and railings, and you could then say, "And employ elevation changes," so that you're not just saying, "Pick one," because my initial reading of that was also, "Pick one."
Right.
If you, if you pick one, you've met the requirements, and I would rather see for residential, that all of those things are employed.
And I, I would even...
I like that.
I would even beef up number one and say, "There needs to be two tiers of plantings," right? Instead of just like this tiny shrub next to that building on 9th East and 7th North, and then a giant wall, let's have two tiers, so we have like roses, and then carl foresters, or small shrub, and then pear trees or something. Is that, I don't know?
I like that as, you know, specific direction, definitely.
Which line are you talking about, Ms. Ellsworth?
246.
246, one, adding something about two tiers of planting.
Okay.
And then, it was recommended to put a combination of these three, and maybe there's a fourth we need.
Do we want to edit right here, right now, in hopes that we can vote someone forward? Is that what we're doing? I mean, because he could literally...
He can annotate right here.
Annotate it right here, I mean, if we're that close, maybe we are, that sounds like.
I think line 251, "Provide access from rear parking to street front business entrances" should be, "Provide pedestrian access from rear parking."
Pedestrian access, right. 251 between "provide" and "access."
Yeah.
I would hope that with future residential developments, the one thing, I think the fact that the parking is right in front of the Liberty Development is a big issue, and if that were not the case, it would feel much different.
Much, yeah.
So, if that street parking on Residential B types of developments were in the rear or underneath or something...
They do have structured parking in that building.
But maybe to buffer that parking, if there is, if there's, you know, on-street parking within 15 feet of a front door, there need to be three tiers of landscaping in order to buffer that.
Or, or a green strip or something that creates an emotional barrier, if you need one.
A park strip with shrubs.
Yeah.
The streetscape's missing on that street.
Things like that.
So, maybe a minimum two-foot vegetative buffer where there is on-street parking within 15 feet of a front door.
I think it's good.
Concern is proximity of a vehicle to a door. I mean, I almost feel like it's the language in four, where we start with mediate between public and private space. That's pretty broad, so talking about why, what we're trying to accomplish there, this is almost like the goal statement, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? So, if it's to, this is where I get challenged on the spot to think of phraseology and stuff, but it's, if we're trying to create an environment that people want to be in, you know, articulating that, if we're trying to create a relationship where vehicles don't impact people in their living room, or impact them less, where that's mitigated, or encouraging people to spend time in that, that quasi-public-private space on a porch, just encouraging, you know, I think in some other parts of the document, you talk about activating the street and trying to make that just a more attractive area to be in. The detailed things that you described, I think, all certainly contribute towards that, but almost just trying to paint that picture of what we're really trying to accomplish. The other things then, with some discretion, that we might be able to, to use, maybe they are very detailed suggestions, but there's still some latitude there that...
Seems like we need to work on paragraph four.
Well, and that brings up a good point, Dave, because there's the space between the front door and the public space, a quasi-private space, but there's also the space between, there's also the relationship between the private space and the cars, and then also the public space and the cars, because even if I don't live there and I'm walking down the street, it's not often comfortable to walk next to these rows of giant trucks, right? So, there's kind of three different relationships there that we need to make more comfortable.
And where do bikes fit in that? I mean...
Bikes?
Yeah.
Bikes are on the road.
I think that's coming up.
That's, that's why I would like to have a further discussion in the future that includes public work, so we can discuss how we can kind of take back some of that real estate that's right now a big paved swath on a two-lane road that doesn't need to be there, that could be redeployed to make a really nice environment. I mean, if you invest in the public realm, you're going to attract development.
Bill, do you feel comfortable with some of the suggestions that we've put out?
Yes, I've been taking notes on these specifics that you've given. I would feel more comfortable making these changes and running it back by the Planning Commission than going straight from this on to the City Council. I'd like you to see it again.
Yeah.
Are we good with that? I can make a motion.
I was going to make one more suggestion, language-wise. On line 244, instead of mediate between public and private space, I'd say, "Transition from public to private space on residential frontages," and then strike the rest of that, this requirement may be met. And just tell them, "Use two tiers of foundation plantings and design porches, stoops, and railings, and employ elevation changes." I would just spell it out.
Pretty concrete, right?
But then maybe there's another five or six down below that says, "Mediate between a public sidewalk and on-street parking."
Deborah, if I could work, just work with you to come up with these revisions that we would then send back to the Planning Commission.
That makes, that makes some sense, right there, yeah.
If you're agreeable to that?
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Deborah. So, are we at a point where we want to discuss specific changes more, anything else we want to try to incorporate into this?
I think if we have any inputs, we can give them to Deborah and Bill and let them...
That's fine.
Push it in.
Craft it in.
And we should, we should do that within a week, if we're going to do that.
How soon would this go, before council, or it would come back to us in the next session?
Right.
Two weeks.
And then, a week after that, or two weeks after that, go to council?
Would be the week after that. Let me look at my calendar, but I believe it'd be the week after.
The commission is September 11th, and municipal council is September 24th.
Okay.
I feel better that we're not trying to make Bill read our minds.
Thank you.
I think those are constructive.
It's all good discussion, and we'll just end up with the best possible.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. I move that we continue item five, the request from the Provo City Community Development Department to amend section 14, point 34, point 295, on the downtown development design standards to clarify architectural requirements.
To September 11th.
To September 11th.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard and Ms. Wynden. All those in favor of continuing item five until the September 11th, Planning Commission hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right, and again, please do provide comments, and we'll try to roll them into one document that addresses, and maybe we can make a note at the intro of the document that we revise what the revisions were, based on our discussion.
I'm sorry, who seconded the motion?
Mr. Howard.
Andrew?
Mr. Howard and Ms. Wynden. They said, "We're done, let's move on." All right, last but not least, we have item six on our agenda tonight. The Community Development Department requests an ordinance text amendment, chapter, a text amendment to chapter 14.37 of the Provo City Code to establish minimum bicycle parking standards. This is, will have citywide impact, and Mr. Taylor will present item six.
Thank you. So, as I've been reading through the city's bicycle master plan, this is one of the things that was suggested, is that as we do already with cars, that we provide a minimum parking standard for bicycles. And as I go through these slides, I'll show you how it agrees with our city's general plan and how there's a need for, there's a clear need for it in a lot of what's been happening and being developed. Okay, so first, this is, this is the need that we're showing. I went to Liberty Center, I went to Startup Crossing, 200 City View and 63 East, these are all very recent housing developments, they were all built downtown, I'm assuming all with parking reductions, saying that, you know, people here are going to walk and bike around. But what I found is that they're not providing the type of bike parking that a resident would want if they were to be biking primarily. So, one example, let's look at Startup Crossing, put in the transit-oriented development zone, reduced parking right by Front Runner, this should be the crown jewel of alternative transportation. It offered zero long-term parking spaces. All it had was one rack outside that people don't trust, so a lot of people are bringing their bicycles inside of the apartments, which the management doesn't like, dings up the building, so there's this conflict of, between the tenants and the management. Here's the photo of Startup Crossing, right? Not a place that I would want to leave my bicycle long-term, and yet, that's what this was billed as, is, you know, people are going to bike here, but they didn't provide the type of parking that someone would use.
Can you, can we back up? What about that, do you not want to keep your bike there long-term, because it's not covered, or there's low security, or like what's, what about it?
Yeah, you mentioned a few good points. It's not covered, that's one, so if it's raining, if it's snowing, your bike's getting destroyed, it's getting rusted with sun, rain, snow. The second is, it's always outside, it's always open to the public, and even if you've locked it well, people can pick it apart, people can take parts off your bicycle. They do this all the time around BYU, they'll just take wheels, take handlebars, whatever they want to take. So, I would call this short-term parking, it's great for two hours or less, but if you're keeping your bike here overnight, odds are things are going to get taken off of it. 63 East is also a bad example. The rack on the left is in the Wells Fargo garage, that rack is not even bolted to the ground. So, if you locked a nice bike there and someone really wanted it and they had a pickup truck, they could take the rack and your bicycle.
Yeah.
And then the other in the alleyway... And then the other in the alleyway is great for short-term parking. It serves a good use for the neighboring businesses, there's gurus, there's good time. But again, this isn't a place where you want to leave your bike out overnight, right? Anybody can access this alleyway, anybody can pick stuff apart on this. I have friends who live at 63 East and they keep their bikes inside of their apartments because of this. And sometimes the city itself needs help designing our bike parking. These are the center street racks that nobody uses, and there's a clear reason why. One is that you can't lock your frame to the rack itself. This is, you put the wheels in, it bends your wheels, people can steal the rest of your bike. Another is, they expect you to stop in the middle of the street as you're traveling on the right lane, walk, pick your bike up over the curb, all while traffic is running through, right? And then walking along that narrow strip of concrete around the planted median and back onto the sidewalk to get into a store. So it's just not designed well. Even, even the city needs help in how we design things. And what this, this code amendment would support the general plan, the general plan says that the city will significantly increase bike facilities, and it says that employers, I would add, and developers and landlords can promote greater use of bicycles by providing secure and convenient bike parking for employees, customers, tenants, home buyers, all of that. And the bike master plan says that in addition to increasing bike parking, Provo should also adopt design standards for short and long-term bike parking. And so some of the design standards included in this, for short-term parking, these would be the racks that would be approved unless the developer comes to the city and says, "Hey, I have this great design," and planning approves it. But the reason why these designs are chosen is because they, this is a recommendation from our bike master plan and from the Association of Bicycle Pedestrian Professionals, they touch the bicycle at two points on the frame so the bike doesn't tip over. As well, this design would specify, it has to be 50 feet from the main entrance of the building. A lot of times, if you're going to a store, you're not expecting them to be halfway around or in the back. So you want it to be accessible from the front. We want to make sure that they're three feet away from any fixed object so that easy loading and unloading of the rack, make sure it's not blocking wheelchair access. And again, these are the approved designs, unless the developer comes to us with this great artistic design that would work well, and we think it's a good thing that we'd approve it. So that's a design standard for short-term, for long-term parking. This is something that it would look like, it would be either a bike room, secured parking area, like a fenced-in section of a parking garage like you have at New Skin Underground, could be bike lockers like you see at the UTA station. This bike room pictured, this is something that you'll see at a lot of office buildings nowadays. Adobe has this in Lehigh. And the code would also make sure that this is accessible either on the ground level, through an elevator, inside a ramped garage, so that people don't have to pick them up over stairs, right? It's easy to get to. And the code would also specify quantity, so in two different tiers. One is a general requirement. Anybody who builds anywhere in the city would be subject to that general requirement. And then a higher requirement, if they want to reduce the amount of car parking that's required of them, then they would need to go for that higher requirement. The city already does have a specified amount for the higher requirement. It's a very general, one space per 2,000 square feet, and so this gets a little bit more specified. And it specifies long-term versus short-term, which our current code does not. After I sent the staff report to you, I got some feedback from the city's legal department, from Brian Jones, and there are a few changes that I made to the text. I have them listed here. It just, the first point, it makes sure that ADA accessibility is not blocked. Second, it allows for other types of designs for the short-term racks, as long as the city planning approves it. So this offers more flexibility, they're not stuck on certain designs. It specifies as well, the rack should be 24 inches away from a curb so that people aren't stepping out into the street when parking their bike, or their bikes not hanging into the street. It also opens up the possibility for mounting them, not only into concrete and asphalt, but other hardscaping that they might, might use in the future. And also opens up the possibility of elevator access to the long-term parking facilities. So that's all for that. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
The numbers that are prescribed in, in here, is that just a best guess, or does that come from some recommendation somewhere, some source?
So these numbers come from the Association of Bicycle and Pedestrian Professionals, and these specific ones were suggested to us in our bicycle master plan in 2014 that the council approved.
So I'm looking at the table that has the parking spaces required. Is that part of the whole, that, that's a requirement that goes with the rest of it?
Yes.
I just, they all look pretty reasonable to me. And then I got to colleges and universities where it says one short, one long-term space for each 10 students. So if BYU has 34,000 FTE students, we're supposed to have 3,500 parking spaces for bikes on campus?
How was, what was that number again? I'm sorry.
They've got 34,000 FTE as students go. And so if you're talking one to 10, you're talking 3,500 short-term parking spaces? And they have that for cars.
Yeah, so BYU has 10,000 car parking spaces that they'll sell to students. They also have about 6,000 bike parking spaces currently.
Okay.
So they're, they're more than surpassing that-
Oh, really?
-number already, uh-huh. And as well, BYU, I would say 95 percent of their bike parking would be considered short-term, it's out in the open. There are, there are no locked bike parking facilities at BYU yet, but there are covered ones that faculty is pushing to be locked. They're, they just, they keep bugging the facilities people to, to put a gate around them with key card access. So there, there is a need for it, a desire for it already. And again, this, this would only apply to new developments, we can't go in and force someone to, to do this.
Okay.
Yeah, with the medical school- Are they, I mean, would they have to meet this standard? Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Are we ready for a motion? We'll be making a motion to recommend or-
To recommend.
Or not recommend to municipal council on item six.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Wynden?
I move that we recommend with a positive endorsement to the city council, that Community Development Department requests an ordinance text that we approve, an ordinance text amendment to chapter 14.37 of the Provo City Code to establish minimum bike, bicycle parking standards.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Wynden's motion?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Phillips. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on item six?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded.
Seconded by our-
So adjourned.
And you thought this would be a short meeting.
I did.
But it was a good meeting.
It was very good.